Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Oh my goodness. Jim.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jim Keith. I have a slight little problem with the entrance to this parking lot over here. When the cars come out, they take up the whole thing. And we just wanted to put an exit out there too, in the stop. We're going at it on Stevens Street. That would be one way in and one way out. It's just a little concrete and grass over there.
Is it exiting to the west on Raleigh Street? Is that where you're talking about?
It's the one coming in. Coming in and out.
Okay.
And when the cars come out, they come out in the middle of it. Then you can't get in. You set out the traffic and everything. So I'd like to see if it's possible to put an exit out there.
That's, that's a one way. There would have to be one way even if you did that because that first section is one way.
He's talking about over by the water tower, I'm thinking.
No, he's talking about coming out on Stevens Street. Come straight out and exiting onto the Stevens Street.
And be a right-hand turn.
Yeah. It'd have to be a right-hand turn only. You couldn't turn left there. And I'm sure you would have that problem.
Are you down near where that glass, or where's where that glass wall is? On the west side of the building? There's just a few parking spaces for the door where it comes in.
Oh, no.
It would make it so much simpler because somebody's going to get there. I know it. It's been with me for a while and I just thought I'd bring it up.
Well, that involves City of Martinburg. Anything you do there, they have to approve it.
It might be worth just looking into because that'll widen the entrance.
Well, one of the things can be done is put a line in the middle and do some striping right there would help. Yeah, so it's here by the tower, what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's where he's talking about coming in. But you're absolutely right. A line would make a big difference.
Sure, sure.
Just to give people some, some people have to have a direction and they can follow as long as you give them guidelines.
As long as they're behind the wheel in the direction.
All right.
It makes it tough to come in there if somebody's coming out. That's where they use the center.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jim. Anyone else?
I would like to say that Reverend, your prayer this morning, you didn't include yourself and you're definitely part of this family.
Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate everything you do for us.
All right. Need a motion to approve the agenda, please?
President, we approve the revised agenda for Thursday, May 27.
All right. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I will say, Penny, the mics are working better now.
I think so too. I noticed those.
Yeah, much better.
We try to call in and see how it's working. I go out and I call.
Hey, Penny. Any, any questions on the purchase order? Statements?
I do have, I do have a question.
I see it's all marked up this morning.
Well, there's a little bit of mark on it. There is, I had a question about the, um...
The printer.
Printo stat. I thought, and it was coming out of the, it's marked under the assessor there. I thought IT was taking care of all that stuff.
This is probably coming from his evaluation fund or the map.
No, it's coming out of 406. He does maintain, this is the plotter that he uses in there. The day, they, they, the plotting equipment is maintained through IT, but we still put the money for this particular plotter in his budget.
Okay.
So this is the, that seventy-two dollar charge. That's, that's, that has to do with that plotter.
Okay. So that's not part of what the IT manages?
What about, what is it, page thirteen? I wasn't clear what the shielded box task, um, what, what that... Several weeks ago, that's Ramsey Electronics. Several weeks ago, the prosecuting attorney and I met with the head of the local task force. They, they are provided with quite a bit of funding from HIDA. HIDA has decided that they will not release, because the task force is made up of West Virginia State Police, City of Martinburg, and Burke County, that they would not release the funding directly to the task force. It had to go through an agency. The current chairman of the task force is actually a West Virginia policeman. He does not want to get the state of West Virginia involved in drawing down HIDA funds because we all know why. So it was agreed that the prosecuting attorney would pay for equipment like this out of her forfeiture fund and then HIDA will reimburse her.
Okay. I hadn't seen that before and wasn't clear what that was, so thank you.
Anything else?
All right. Moving on to the internal budget revisions. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. We have two internal budget revision requests for your consideration. Both are from the assessor, Department 406, which is the assessor general fund. Both requests are being made in anticipation of your approval of an encumbrance that's in your package. The first request, Mr. Hess is requesting that he be allowed to reduce line 216 maintenance and repair equipment by five thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is five thousand eight hundred sixty dollars ninety-four cents with thirty-one point oh four percent spent today. An increased line to twelve printing by five thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is three thousand nineteen dollars or thirty-nine point sixty-two percent. Again, that request is being made to encumber printing expenses totaling seventy-five hundred dollars. The second request again from the assessor, general fund, decrease line 568 assessor other contributions by seven thousand five hundred dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is nine thousand six hundred dollars and increase travel line 214 by seventy-five hundred dollars. And that's to cover, that request is to cover encumbered expense request to attending the assessor.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Oh, my goodness. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jim Keith. I have a slight little problem with the entrance to this parking lot out here. When the cars come out, they take up the whole thing. And we just wondered if we could put an exit out there too in the stop. We're going at it on Stevens Street. That would be one way in and one way out. It's just a little concrete and grass over there. And a whole lot of stuff.
Is it exiting to the west on Raleigh Street? Is that where you're talking about?
It's the one coming in, coming in and out.
Okay.
And when the cars come out, they come out in the middle of it. Then you can't get in. You set out the traffic and everything. So I like to see if it's possible to put an exit out there.
That's, that's a one way. There would have to be one way even if you did that because that first section is one way.
He's talking about over by the water tower, I'm thinking.
No, he's talking about coming out on Stevens Street. Come straight out and exiting onto the Stevens Street.
Right-hand turn.
Yeah. Yeah. It'd have to be a right-hand turn only. You couldn't turn left there. And I'm sure you would have that problem.
Are you down there near where that glass? Or where's the, where that glass wall is? On the west side of the building? There's just a few parking spaces with the door where it comes in.
Oh, no.
It would make it so much simpler because somebody's going to get there. I know it. And it's been here for a while and I just thought I'd bring it up.
Well, that involves the City of Martinburg. Anything you do there, they have to approve it.
It might be worth just looking into because that, that'll widen the entrance.
Well, one of the things can be done is put it, put a line in the middle and, and do some striping right there would help. Yeah, so it's here by the tower of what we're talking about.
That's where he's talking about coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're absolutely right. A line would make a big difference.
Sure, sure. Dividing line.
Just to give people some, some people have to have a direction and they can follow as long as you give them guidelines.
As long as they're behind the wheel in the direction.
All right.
It makes it tough to come in there with somebody coming out. That's what they use the center of.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Jim. Anyone else?
I would like to say that Reverend, your prayer this morning, you, you didn't include yourself and you're definitely part of this family.
Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate everything you do for us. All right. Need a motion to approve the agenda, please?
President, we approve the revised agenda for Thursday, May 27.
All right. Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I will say, Penny, the mics are working better now.
I think so too. I noticed those.
Yeah, much better.
We try to call in and see how it's working. I go out and I call.
Hey, Penny. Any, any questions on the purchase order? Statements?
I do have, I do have a question.
It's all marked up this morning.
Well, there's a little bit of mark on there. There is a, I had a question about the, um...
Printer.
Printo stat. I thought, and it was coming out of the, it's marked under the assessor there. I thought IT was taking care of all that stuff.
This is probably coming from his evaluation fund or the map.
No, it's coming out of 406. He does maintain, this is the plotter that he uses in there. The day they, they, the plotting equipment, it is maintained through IT. But we still put the money for this particular plotter in his budget.
Okay.
So this is the, that seventy-two dollar charge.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that has to do with that plotter.
Okay. So that's not part of what the IT manages? What about, what is it, page thirteen? I wasn't clear what the shielded box task, um, what, what that...
Several weeks ago, that's Ramsey Electronics.
Yeah.
Several weeks ago, the prosecuting attorney and I met with the head of the, of the local task force. They, they are provided with quite a bit of funding from HIDA. HIDA has decided that they will not release, because the task force is made up of West Virginia State Police, City Martinsburg and Burke County, that they would not release the funding directly to the task force. It had to go through an agency. The current chairman of the task force is actually a West Virginia State policeman. He does not want to get the state of West Virginia involved in drawing down HIDA funds. Because we all know why. So it was agreed that the prosecuting attorney would pay for equipment like this out of her forfeiture fund. And then HIDA will reimburse her.
Okay. I hadn't seen that before and wasn't clear what that was, so. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving on to the internal budget revisions. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. We have two internal budget revision requests for your consideration. Both are from the Assessor Department 406, which is the Assessor General Fund. Both requests are being made in anticipation of your approval of an encumbrance that's in your package. The first request, Mr. Hess is requesting that he be allowed to reduce line 216 maintenance and repair equipment by five thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-four cents with thirty-one point oh four percent spent today. An increased line to twelve printing by five thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is three thousand nineteen dollars or thirty-nine point sixty-two percent. Again, that request is being made to encumber printing expenses totaling seventy-five hundred dollars. The second request again from the Assessor General Fund, decrease line 568 Assessor Other Contributions by seven thousand five hundred dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is nine thousand six hundred dollars. An increased travel line 214 by seventy-five hundred dollars. And that's to cover, that request is to cover encumbered expense request to attending Assessor training again, which is in your, in your package.
All right, so, Mr. Davis, if I'm thinking right, I mean, this is a, this is a, um, internal budget revision and, and he can move the money if he wants.
Yes, sir.
So, any questions on that?
So I am recommending this.
Right, to approve the, the transfer.
Annual Assessor training put on those state or do you know?
I don't know. All she said was Assessor's training. We haven't received any documentation.
All right, so we'll get to that in the encumbrances. But, um, all right. So the way I look at it is if he wants...
I gotta step on and get my charger.
If he wants to use this as an internal budget revisions, um, that's, that's his decision. Moving on to the encumbrances, Mr. Davis? You want to wait until him? I guess let's give him a couple seconds. That way, if we're running over today, I can blame him.
That works. I agree.
Yeah.
I'll make that a motion.
When he comes back in, it's all quiet.
No, because I remember he went and got me a cord not too long ago.
Mr. Davis, if I want to just go ahead and do the payroll schedule for 2021, '22?
All right. As the council is aware, um, we do, we pay twice a month. We pay on the fifteenth and the thirtieth of, of every month unless it's February. Then we pay on the last day of February. Typically, what we do, working with finances, we put out, um, we publish the finance department's pay period, um, schedule for the fiscal year, which this one is for fiscal year 21, '22. And although it indicates that, um, you know, for example, uh, this weekend, this, this particular pay for this, for the thirtieth falls on Sunday this, this week or this month, so we'll be paying tomorrow. It indicates when the, the payday is, but more importantly, it indicates when, um, those departments that have non-exempt employees, hourly employees, have to, the deadline for them to submit their, their time reporting. Uh, and that comes into play particularly for overtime. So, um, we typically bring it to the council every year and have you approve it. And then once you approve it, then we'll send it out to all the departments.
All right, Dan, I just moved on to payroll schedule for 2021 to, '22. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis?
Need a motion?
Do need a motion on that one? Yes, sir?
Mr. President, I move to accept the, the pay schedule for this year 21, '22.
Approved, right? Approved. Okay. How emotional, floor, do we have a second?
Eddie, you have a second?
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess I should ask, was there any discussion on that? So, no. All right. So, all right, back to the twelve encumbrances. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. You have twelve encumbrance requests for your consideration. The deadline to submit encumbrance requests was last Friday. So this will be the, the last agenda that, that is included in your package. Just as a point of clarification, uh, an encumbrance is not necessarily permission to spend. As you know, you know, department heads and county and elected officials can spend, um, their fund as they see fit for purposes of, of their budget. What an encumbrance is, it's the reservation of budgeted funds for an obligation or contract for goods, materials, or services that have already been ordered and that we expect delivery of within typically sixty days. And, and what that does, it actually commits funds for this current fiscal year so that if the invoice shows up in July, it's not being paid out of the next fiscal year's budget. So it's more of a timing issue. When it really comes into play is when, and I'll use Mrs. Sine as an example. Mrs. Sine has two encumbrances in here for seminars that she's attending. She and an employee, the circuit clerk is attending, that they put on their P card. Well, the conference is in this fiscal year, but it's not going to show up on the P card bill until next fiscal year. So what we're doing is encumbering funds for services that are being provided in this fiscal year to be paid out of this fiscal year, although we may not be able to do it next fiscal year. So it's not permission for department heads or electives to spend the money. It's just a, it's just more of a timing for purposes of budget. We have turned down quite a few encumbrances that never made into your package. For example, we got an encumbrance request for some training that was going to occur in May of 2022. Well, we, of course, we didn't even bring that in here because, you know, that certainly falls outside the parameters of the policy.
And Mrs. Sine has gone, tried to put money in, uh, in an encumbrance for, that didn't meet the timeline. It's too far out.
And you have denied it.
Absolutely.
As well as encumbrances requested by the previous sheriff you denied.
Well, I mean, here's, we're going to get to it here shortly, but the training that the assessor says five twenty-four to five twenty-seven, that's already taken place.
Well, it's, that, that will be scheduled for next week. No, I'm sorry. That is, that would be this, that would be this week.
Yeah, so you, you don't, you, you already receive a bill if you're going to train, you know?
Right.
It's not estimated at all.
Well, and we haven't, we don't have any documentation.
Understood.
So the first request, um, is from the assessor. The assessor actually put, there's supposed to be one encumbrance request form for every encumbrance request. He actually put three encumbrances, three encumbrance requests in one form. And you probably saw some of the emails flowing back and forth.
And the reason why there's been the one, two, and three is so it's a competitive bid.
So we can show that quotes have been received unless there had, unless it's a sole source. So the assessor's requesting that he be allowed to, um, encumber seven thousand five hundred dollars out of printing, which is oh oh one four oh six two twelve. The current fund balance is three thousand nineteen dollars. However, with the, uh, internal budget revision, that amount is now eight thousand nineteen dollars. To pay five thousand dollars to progressive, um, I'm not sure. I think it's inserts for property tax billings and also two thousand five hundred dollars progressive printing for envelopes. We do not have the documentation to back that up as I correctly stated. Okay. The other request is, uh, encumbrance of six thousand dollars, um, which would come out of oh oh one four oh six two fourteen that until you just approved the internal budget revision, there was no training fund available in the amount of six thousand dollars for four days of assessor's training at the Ogle, Ogle Bay Resort. Because it does not meet provisions of, um, Internal Control Policy eleven, which is encumbrance of funds, my recommendation is to counsel not.
Well, I want to elaborate a little bit. The, um, also email going back and forth to the assessor basically told him to be here with invoices and the documentation that he would have rather than estimates and question marks on the amounts. And he's not here today.
And I figured if he would come in today and we had the documentation, maybe.
Well, it even says here, we will, we'll have invoice on five twenty-six for the progressive thing. Well, that's yesterday. All right? And we don't have any invoices here today. And, and like I said, the training at the resort is a five twenty-four, five twenty-seven. Well, you have to prepay for training. You don't go there and pay, pay afterwards. I mean, we, all of our training, we, we prepaid.
Well, the only, and, and it could be, he didn't put that on a P card or something and he's wanting to encumber the funds to pay the bill when it comes in, right? That's not the case?
No, sir.
All right.
And he is aware of the policy.
Yes, sir. I said in the policy.
I mean, even, even prior to this.
And, and we sent out the notification a month ago that, you know?
Right.
When the deadline for encumbrance, so there was plenty of time for all of our department heads and electives to gather the information and documentation that they needed.
Yeah, and Eddie, this isn't, this isn't something that just happened this year. I mean, it's every year you get all these, we get all these requests for encumbrances that really don't meet the criteria for, um, for encumbering funds.
All right, so you want to address these one at a time?
Well, this one in particular.
All right, so I need a motion on this encumbrance from the assessor.
You want a positive or?
Yeah, I don't care how you want it. I'll take a negative.
Okay, well, either way. For the, um, encumbrance request form dated on five twenty-one, I've moved to deny the request.
For the assessor?
For the assessor.
All right. How emotional, floor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion?
Is this for all three that?
Yes, all three.
They're all three estimates?
Yeah.
And they're all three? Sad to say, we should have had his one, so we should have had...
What his motion is covering.
Right. All right, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
The next eleven encumbrance requests, um, all comply with the policy. We did not scan all the documentation into your package because we figured, you know, there was no reason for you to have to scroll through it all. But it is in your signature packets attached to the encumbrance. So the first request is from, um, Circuit Clerk. Or the next request is from the Circuit Clerk, Mrs. Sine. And one of her employees has attended the Circuit Clerk's training conference, um, which occurred this month. It was put on her P card. Requesting that, um, first request is that she encumber one thousand dollars out of one zero zero one four oh one, four oh three two fourteen travel. The fund balance is six thousand dollars. And again, that is in compliance, the request is in compliance with, um, the requests. The second request is for Mrs. Sine to attend training on June twelfth, thirteen fifteen, twenty fifteen. It's the West Virginia Association of Counties meeting, which she is on the board of. She's requesting, again, she's put it on her P card and she'll have some travel expenses totaling one thousand one hundred dollars. Requesting that she, that you allow her to encumber eleven hundred dollars out of zero zero one four oh three two fourteen travel. Again, the fund balance is six thousand dollars. The next request is upgrade of some of her printers. And she is working through our IT department. However, she has agreed to purchase the printers out of her budget. The vendor is CDWG. The, the amount of the encumbrance is one thousand and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. They have been ordered. We're just waiting for the arrival of the printers and the invoice.
Gary agrees to that?
Yes. Gary's actually the one that ordered them for her. And, and you'll see the documentation in your folder that's signed off by Gary. Requesting that she be allowed to encumber this funds out of supplies, materials, zero zero one four oh three, three forty-one. Fund balance is currently fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. The next requests then are from the sheriff. All are out of Department 700. The first request is the sheriff requesting that he be allowed to encumber three thousand four hundred dollars for, um, two fingerprint machines. Each fingerprint machine is, uh, sold at the amount of one thousand seven hundred dollars. And this would be a sole source, um, purchase. The current fund balance in the sheriff's department's supplies, materials is fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and one dollars and seventy-six cents. The next request is for, um, peerless handcuffs to be purchased from Bowles. From supplies and materials, twenty-four dollars per set times twelve would be encumbrance of two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And again, all of this, all of these supplies have been ordered, um, and have been placed on the P cards. We're just waiting for the P card to come in. The next is for, um, eight taco handcuff carriers from High Speed Gear. The encumbrance request again out of supplies and materials is two hundred totals, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. The next request again from the sheriff's department is for seven tactical holsters, uh, Glock mag carriers, totaling two hundred and eighty-seven dollars again to be paid out of Fund 341 Supplies and Materials. The next request is for rapid deployment drive by pouch mag carriers. Six of those at a hundred and nine dollars and ninety-nine cents totaling six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Again, to be paid out of seven hundred and three forty-one. Next request of payment to, uh, alternate force, um, first response evidence markers. As the sheriff has indicated, he now wants to put evidence kits in all of the, um, cruisers so that as first responders, even before the forensic teams gets on place, they can start doing some of the, um, uh, some of the...
Bagging.
The tagging of, tagging and bagging of the evidence. So this goes to what he wants to do. Sixty of these evidence marker kits for a total of one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Again, to be paid out of supplies and materials. The next request is for dry safe. Total amount of, actually the two bids, um, they both were eleven hundred dollars requesting that he be purch, that he purchase, this particular product from a company called Searchie, um, in the amount of eleven hundred dollars. The next request is for, from National Duty Supply for badge holders. Ten of those at twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents for a total of two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents. And again, that, they all come out of supplies and materials. The money's there. Either the equipment has been ordered, we're just waiting for delivery with invoice, or it's been ordered and it's going to be on in the sheriff's P card. He and I did review the...
All right, anybody have any questions for the eleven encumbrances that Mr. Davis has, has recommended to approve? Okay. Change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Lain Malk County Clerk for the following individuals' clerks. Jerem Marie Green, annual salary of twenty-eight thousand seven seventy-nine, effective June second, two thousand twenty-one. Caitlin Virginia Davis, annual salary of twenty-eight thousand seven seventy-nine, effective May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Mr. President, if I may, although it's an employee of the clerk, um, I don't know who Caitlin Virginia Davis is and she's certainly no relation.
Okay.
So I don't want anyone to think that.
All right.
What's Department four thirteen for?
Voters.
Oh, though?
Yes.
All right. And then we have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess for Tiffany Sanders as a clerk with an annual salary of twenty-five thousand, effective May the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Change in status received from Jen Swisher, nine one one director for the following telecommunicators. They are receiving a salary increase for being certified training officers. Ryan Schuman, uh, salary increase from thirty-seven nine to thirty-eight four, effective March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Melissa Holtz-Coll, uh, salary increase from thirty-nine seven ninety-five to forty thousand two ninety-five, effective March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Letter of resignation received from the county clerk's office for, uh, Sherilyn Smith, effective June third, two thousand twenty-one. Letter red, relate, uh, letter of resignation received from the finance office for Diane Ledden, effective May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions on the change in statuses? Approval amendments for May thirteenth, uh, Burke County Council meeting. President, Vice President Whitaker was not present, so it needs, if there's no changes or correction, the motion for those?
I'll move.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
One extension.
We have the county council calendars. The offices will be closed on Monday, the thirty-first for Memorial Day. We'll be back in the chambers, uh, on the third, um, on Thursday at nine AM. We also have a, um, we have. Well, my calendar says nine AM, but it's actually nine-thirty. So, um, on Thursday, the tenth, we'll have the public hearing, uh, proposed change of the Tuscaloosa District and at six PM on, on the la, uh, the tenth as well.
Looks like we're doing on the twenty-fourth a nine AM meeting as well.
Who's doing this?
She wants us out of here.
Could you come to the front, please? So we can address this issue? All right. Boarding commissions.
I should have put some red circles around.
You should have. Um, on, tonight, we have ambulance authority at five PM here in the chambers. We have a five PM lamp, library board. Um, we have, next week, we have a five PM sewer district on Tuesday, the first, and a six PM stonewater. Any changes or corrections to boards and commissions?
Mr. President, if I just may add, um, just so the council knows, you did approve the resolution last week for the financing of the thirty-one cruisers in detailing, we did lock the interest rate yesterday, um, at one point six eight percent, um, which is probably, and it's fixed for five years. So that's the lowest of the four loans that we've got for our fleet. Um, that's the lowest we've been able to obtain. The very first one was two point three three, second one was two point seven one, and then the one we did, the last one, the loan number three that we did in nineteen was two point eight four. So we are, I, again, actually able to fix this at one point six eight percent. So today at noon, um, we will be closing on that loan, um, and then as the vehicles are started, they should be delivered to the dealership, um, next week, grace, beginning next week, today. Um, as they prepare them, they'll load those on a transit vehicles, and then they'll be delivering them to us. Um, we'll start drawing down the total amount of loan number four is one million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety cents.
When you talk about that, Mr. Davis, real quick, I mean, one of our vehicles, I, I think it's a K-nine vehicle that we just got done outfitting, uh, at seven fifty Baltimore Street, has won award in Jefferson County, uh, a week and a half ago for being the most impressive cruiser. Voted by the people.
Yep. So that's all I have, but we are going closing today.
And again, another prime example of when we sharpen our pens and we, we watch our finances and we get our, uh, credit rating up, it's another way of saving the taxpayers a huge amount of money. And, and this council's done a wonderful job in making sure that we, uh, borrow the money and have our finances in line to where we're borrowing money, that the, the lowest rate that we've ever seen in history, uh, which would be higher if we went and worked on, on improving everything, so, um.
And this will be our last round of vehicles that we need, um, unless we, of course, we'll have to purchase some as vehicles are damaged or totaled.
And Tracy's really, really excited to hear about that, too.
But we're not scheduled to buy any vehicles, um, any, any substantial volume of vehicles into fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So this will be going through two years, two fiscal years.
All right, we also have a stop payment, void payment check request from the county clerk's office. Um, any questions on that? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Like motion to approve consent agenda for May twenty-seventh, twenty-one.
All right, have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Barnhart, board meeting report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have a, uh, maybe pull it on here, very. A Berkeley County Public Service Water District meeting, it was fairly short, but, uh, they did a pay application, number nine, for HRI, which is the Grapevine Water Main Project, and the physical line is completed and the pressure test, uh, it's done by now. That was for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Approval of pay application number five for Cardinal Point, that was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Approval of the mainline extension agreement for South Brook, which is on Shively Road, ninety-one townhouses, I think a hundred and fifty-one single-family houses, Berkeley Ridge, which is in Spring Mills, a hundred and fifty townhouses, and Butler's Crossing, which is the Inwood Food Line, which goes where, uh, the Walmart was supposed to go there in, uh, Inwood. Approval of design plans for lot three, Mid-Atlantic I eighty-one Logistics Park, which is down there in McCorning, which is a warehouse. Um, Bunker Hill Boyd's Crossing, which was approved several years ago, and then they found out that they had totally changed the layout of it and required them to resubmit it, which they had, and overlook at Riverside, which had revised plans, which is townhouses. And then they had the, uh, Jim, we met, he gave the, uh, the, uh, administrator's report, which was, uh, Bunker Hill Design is coming along nicely, and, uh, they're still looking for Leaks in the Woods, and, uh, that was about it. And then they went to executive session, so I left. And then, uh.
Have you had anything, uh, any improvements, uh, discussions out on, uh, around the accident area for, um, water out there?
No.
Another conversation started a while back.
Not yet.
And then I had, uh, last night, I got a free meal at the Moose because they honored several local agencies, uh, Meals on Wheels, which is what I was doing there, and the Boys and Girls Club, they gave me all a check. Um, Dr. Queen was there for the Little League, and, um, Harry Johnson was supposed to be there, but he wasn't. They gave money to the city of Martinsburg, I don't know what for, and what they're going to do with it, I don't know. So, uh, that was my meeting.
All right, Mr. Delia.
I had a senior services meeting yesterday, and.
When they're going to open it, boy.
Well, they're, they're going to, uh, they're going to be doing, they're, they're going to have a staff meeting and do a press release, um, here within the next few days. The governor has, um, sent a mandate out that they want, um, se, senior services buildings, um, operational by the twenty-second.
June?
Yeah, but I don't know that there's any way that's going to be possible for them to do it with all the things that they have to do. Um, you know, they just, they just come up with rules and say, you gotta do this, you know? Um, but I'm sure they're going to do it as quick as possible.
I'm sure the need is there.
There, and there is a need, and they are crafting a, a, um, a plan with timelines so that they can get everything in line to be able to do that, and, and obviously as safe as they can. So that, that is, uh, that is going to happen. Had a couple of the delegates there. Um, uh, Forsett and Hardy were there to, um, thank them for what they do and, uh, and tell them, you know, how they're supporting and trying to make things better in, uh, in Berkeley County and, and, uh, working towards helping senior services out, so that was nice as well.
To go along with that, the delay of three or four weeks that the O P actually would benefit us. Um, we have two of the old air conditioning, rooftop air conditioning units that just, we have repaired them every year since I can remember, and this year they go, are beyond repair. Um, so we're just awaiting for, um, the delivery of the equipment. Uh, we have everything lined up for installation, uh, but they are down to rooftop air conditioning units that we can, that can resuscitate, so.
And, and one of, one of.
The heat of the summer would be of the issue.
Yeah, one of those, you know, one of those areas that it cools, the big area, um, the, the big room, as soon as you come in, um, that's a heavily, heavily used area, so if that doesn't get, if the equipment doesn't come in time, they're, they'll have to, there's no way they can not.
Everything's been ordered, it's just the way, it's like everything else that we're doing when it comes to building maintenance, it's just a matter of the material.
Especially now.
That's it.
Counselperson, please, President Whitaker.
I didn't have any meetings to attend, but I had the honor of going to, uh, another, honoring of, uh, our friend Hunter Wil, Hunter Willis, who was, uh, given the honorary, um, engineer licensing. So I got to go to Stralsburg, Pennsylvania to be with him. He operated a steam train.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, and got a personal tour of the, uh, the facility up there. It's one of the facilities only left that, I was telling Dan, that could actually build a steam engine from scratch. So it was very interesting. And I was telling Dan, I said, I'd, if he's interested, I'd like to bring him in for, you know, honorary councilperson, too, so. I'll ask the family, see if I can not give a penny on, on a Thursday.
Hunter Willis?
Hunter Willis, yes.
So they don't know the Giles family? And their steam engines?
No.
Oh, yeah, they'd be.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
Yeah, that family, they, they know everything about steam.
I mean, with, I mean, this, this guy, he was growing up, I mean, it was all about steam engines and everything, but it wasn't, it wasn't about video games. He wanted, he wanted hands-on, and he, six, sixteen years old, he got to, um, actually operate a train through that whole.
Torque and power.
Yeah. They say if they can get it to move, they'll pull it. And his steam engines, diesels are a little bit different, that, you know, they, they run diesel electric. If you, you know, they, they don't have the same torquing ability as what a steam, so once you build up the steam pressure about a hundred and fifty to two hundred PSI, if that train moves, it'll pull whatever's hooked to it.
Counselperson, Goganer.
Yes, I had a Landmarks meeting, and, uh, it was, they're doing, they're, I say they, Todd is in, his crowd was busy with, um, land development requests, uh, people that want to purchase different properties, uh, that, that do have historical value to Berkeley County, and he's able to provide them with, uh, areas of significance to those properties, uh, which have been several, uh, since last, last month. And I will be working on facilitating the MOU with Landmarks, and it will be cabinet.
Good. I don't have anything to report on as a, a board meeting, so, um, board and commission vacancies, any activity there?
That we want to address?
Yes, sir. Yeah. You want to go ahead and make that motion now?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Michael Bell to fill the unexpired term on the Berkeley County Fire Service Board.
Motion been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any other activity?
You have an advocate, uh, on there?
Mm-hmm.
From the, uh, zoning appeals board?
Yes, sir.
Do we want to get them in for an interview?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we wait till, um, attempt to do that next week, because it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I guess this.
Hurry for this one.
I, yeah, you're.
He's gonna go pretty quickly.
I think so. I won't be here, but that'd be.
Yeah, I think Dan can handle the pressure.
Me?
Oh, I'm, not you, you.
Mr. Whitaker.
Jim.
Yeah, Jim Whitaker, he's vice president.
It needs to.
Well, we got the white hair, right?
Earned every one of you.
Any, uh, any other?
Black, what, yours?
It was, yeah. Trying to think who I can blame for the color starting to change, you know? Could be the wife, could be having kids, it could be this job.
The last ten years.
Yeah. All right, any, uh, any other activity? All right, next on our agenda is Anthony Delgetti, legal director, order rescinding the COVID restrictions. Well, we, we've been waiting for this one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have time.
As you all are aware, we had COVID this past year.
Is that what's been happening, you know?
Going on. Um, there haven't been any orders issued by the council for a while, but there were a few back about a year ago, um, dealing with capacity in chambers here, one for the council, as you know, we had a number of vaccinations, the rates of infections are way down. The governor's changed his orders, CVC's changed their recommendations, and this order rescinds all of the COVID nineteen related restrictions. County, council has ordered.
Okay. That's pretty simple then, so let's, um, entertain a motion to approve the, the order to rescind COVID restrictions.
The resolution as presented.
Yes.
Give the president the authority to sign.
All right, uh, the motion.
That's my motion.
Have a motion now, the second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
You have a copy of that?
Um, I'll show what we do.
The one right here.
The other thing, too, I need to back up the board meeting report, there's not, nothing that I had a meeting on, but, uh, you all's handed a letter that is addressed to Senator Capito on some appropriation money that was actually, uh, for Dr. Harden's on creating a recovery village. Um, I, I don't like signing something like this as the president without, uh, your all's blessing. Anybody have any heartache on you be signing that?
I don't.
Okay. All right, I will sign it as president of the county council. Guess we can take a quick break, and we'll be right back. We'll try to stay on schedule.
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Tim's eye, Community Corrections Director, Request for Resolution. And this is what we talked about two weeks ago, right?
Yes, back before you again to revisit the my request for the council to sign a resolution, which would allow that they need permission to pursue learning about requiring about applying Today Report Center to become a licensed data lab center, center through the West Virginia Healthcare Board.
And in this whole process, we look at your
Yes.
And nothing final will be put into place as far as funding position or anything until he comes back before the council. And by that time, we'll have a we'll provide you with a project paper with all the associated calls probably about the time of budget next year, actually.
Oh, yep. Yes, this is this is learning more about it, gathering more information. And there's nothing final about this request. This is just you're getting permission to pursue looking into it further and then to apply and find out if all things line up. And if so, I'll come before you again and present a more formal plan and more formal requests. The idea, though, the main purpose is to move further in the direction of the day report center becoming, you know, long-term financial is sustainable. You know, my mission is to make these programs not cost the taxpayers a dime. I want to try hard to make that happen. This will certainly move us in that direction.
Yeah, I think one of the one of the other reasons that that I have a discussion with Tim is is that we feel that, you know, we have the attention of the participants and stuff like that. And maybe we could possibly do it better. And and that's why I wanted to talk to Tim and make sure that we wasn't going to be stepped on toes of private and public and things of that nature. And after checking in it with Tim and other people, I think we're okay from what I'm gathering.
Unfortunately, because of the nature of the drug problem, there's plenty of work for all parties.
Right.
Anyone who wants to get involved in subsistence work in our county and really anywhere, there's unfortunately, there's a lot of work.
Yeah, it is unfortunate. So, all right, with that said, anybody else have any questions for Tim?
No, I'd just like to add, I think Tim does a great job. And it's 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 great to see you continually look better to program. Much appreciated.
entertain a motion to approve the request for the resolution.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion?
And give the council president permission to sign.
Yes.
Always.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
There's your green light.
Thank you, Tim.
We've already done the payroll schedule for 2122. Mr. Davis moving on to state budget revision number 12, Fund 001.
Yes, sir. This will be the next to the last state budget revision for fiscal year 2122. I'm sorry, 2021. We have been in touch with the state auditor's office. Our final state budget revision must be received by them no later than June 15. So we already have state budget revision number 13 on your schedule. State budget revision number 12, since your last state budget revision, we've received 22 checks of ACHs. Most of them were routine. We did receive eight checks, totaling $31,367 for IT services. The main reason that I wanted to do this state budget revision is to get the money into the IT budget to account for the $232,575 which you encumbered last week for voting machine, or I'm sorry, $67,575 that you approved last week for encumbrances for the voting machine maintenance contract for next fiscal year, and also the $266,741 for our fiscal year 2122 voting machine payment. Mr. Wine also had a capital outlay deficit balance of about $115,700. That was due to the payment for the the new body cameras that the council authorized some time ago that, to be honest with you, I forgot to move into his account. So he did have quite a sizable deficit. So although the total amount of the checks that we received is $122,245, you'll see that we're putting $481,428 in IT, $28,392 in emergency services. Some of that is for reimbursement of equipment that we received from the state of West Virginia, $200 in the central garage, which is remaining payment on one of our auto claims. And then I'm recommending that you allow me to reduce your capital projects budget, which has more than a million dollars down by
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? entertain a motion to approve the state budget revision number 12, Fund 001.
Can I move?
Have a motion on the floor to have second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
One of the things I did talk to Mr. Wine briefly is that I believe in the very near future, probably some reason to think that we need to upgrade some HVAC at 750 Baltimore Street.
750 Baltimore Street. We have, we actually found, we had Tom Dawson here. There's actually a fairly large commercial air conditioning plant that is operable.
Okay.
So we've got that one up actually up and running. So it's just a matter of running some a little bit of ductwork. So we're hoping that we can make do with with that. But it's it's going to be an old unit. So we want to look at that. But we also, as the council does, we also have to start thinking about the judicial center.
Right.
Those air conditioning units are pretty much at end of life. And that's going to be pretty costly upgrading in the next year or so.
Yeah.
I don't want to get to the point where one summer our judicial centers without air conditioning.
The good thing about that on that one is we can do that and upgrade that. And the upgrade will save us in the energy cost and pretty much pay for itself in a matter of five to seven years.
Yeah, the return investment on what we're looking at is about five years.
Yeah, so that's a good thing. All right, next, Art.
One of the times, by the way, one of the times that I checked the water temperature and looking at what you and I were talking about, there was hardly anything coming out.
Oh, very little flow.
Yeah, really. I mean, like, like a little over garden hose.
Oh, my.
Yeah. I was surprised. It's the first time I've seen it.
Well, all right, next on our agenda is Matt Umstead, which is getting a little bit more comfortable of speaking in front of us for the American Rescue Plan Act infrastructure request, sir.
How are you doing this morning?
Going well.
It's a little o'clock. I'm not sure it's not noon yet. Earlier this week, Delegate Hardy reached out to us and asked personally, announced, I don't think it's a secret at this point, he now sees the chair of the interim committee on infrastructure. The speaker selected him to chair that interim committee. He's going to co-chair that, of course, with Senator Clementson. I never remember what county he is from, but any rate, it's a joint committee. The interim committee serve, obviously, during in between the regular legislative sessions. So that committee apparently is going to be charged with taking the first, I guess, back at at least $677 million that the state has been allocated from the federal
Government.
In regards to the COVID-related funding. Delegate Hardy expressed some urgency and asking us to provide a priority list, one through five of infrastructure projects. We actually asked, in addition to that, how we would justify them and justify the need for them and provide some cost estimates. I immediately alerted the county administrator, Mr. Davis, about the request. It came very late. And and the agenda was revised to bring this discussion to that. So obviously, I also immediately reached out to at least a few people, to Sammy Hamilton, the sewer, public sewer district's general manager, Curtis Keller, and the stormwater leader there as well. Curtis advised that he would get back to Davis and some recommendations priorities that they have there.
And I talked to Chairman Rowe for the water and the sewer both, and they should be told what we needed that we would be talking about today, and it needs to be turned in by Friday. So it should have five priorities from each of those.
Right. And Ms. Hamilton, yesterday, at the end of the business day, provided her input as well. And she was very helpful in illustrating some of the cost estimates. I'm not sure where she developed them, but nonetheless, very helpful. And I'm not going to be, just a little bit of background further, probably the day after Delegate Hardy's conversation, Speaker Hanshaw was on statewide radio. He gave an interview, which told me that maybe the urgency to make the determinations on what we want may not be as great. He kind of caution, took some caution to the process and how quickly decisions would be made, what would be allocated, and what would be decided. Just yesterday, of course, they added another wrinkle to this whole federal funding issue. Senator Capito, her committee, she's a ranking member of unanimously reauthorized, I should say unanimously approved the passage of the Reauthorization Act for the Surface Transportation Bill. And that's the bill that comes up every five or six years to reauthorize transportation. A $303 billion bill passed and out of that committee. And why that's important is the unanimous part of it, 20 to zero on that committee, which means that it's a bipartisan, obviously, a lot of bipartisan push there. So the chance of that getting through is pretty high. But basically, it increases funding by 34%, including more than $18 billion for efforts aimed at reducing transportation emissions, electrical vehicle charging, public transportation infrastructure for bicycling and walking.
That's huge.
$3 billion to West Virginia.
$3 billion?
$3 billion to West Virginia over five years. So.
And Matt, you and I talked about this a little bit. And and one of the things we've been talking about as a council is improving some trails and hiking and biking and all that stuff, and improving the quality of life. And I was just recently down in Stephen City, Virginia. And the people that I see walking and riding bicycles are tremendously more than I see here. And, you know, with West Virginia being one of the most unhealthy states in the nation, I'm glad to see that that could could be wisely spent.
Absolutely. Just a little bit more background, and I want to move on to a topic that we just touched on. The federal bill that the, again, the Surface Transportation Reauthorization Act, it's approved, up for approval and reauthorization every five or six years. That is likely to be part of that infrastructure bill that occurred in the national coverage with the president and the Congress going back and forth. And there's a press conference today regarding the overarching package. So who knows where that overarching package will end up. But this part of this part of the federal action right now has 20 to zero support. So I, the policy person to me says the likelihood of this getting through and passing and being left the president's desk is pretty high, that part of the bill alone, regardless of what happens with the overarching infrastructure. Speaker Hanshaw, in his interview, expressed some concern, and probably explained it a lot more than than I'm going to at the moment, but the importance of the counties and local governments knowing and trying to identify, you know, where the funding sources for what, you know, there's there's already so much money floating around for various programs. There's there's money committed to different projects already through the transportation programs. And trying to coordinate all this funding and assigning it to whatever project you want to get done. It basically comes down to developing a flow chart or a spreadsheet to trying to assign, you know, this funding source is going to pay for this, you know, our $23 million is going to go for this, or, you know, the state funding is going to come in to Berkeley County for, you know,
Broadband.
Or whatever it is. And I think there's going to be a need for, honestly, a spreadsheet on trying to make sure we're
Navigate.
Strategically plotting how our how our funds are being, you know, identified and what funding sources we hope to use for what, for what project.
Senator President Blair said that we, you know, we want to make sure that the state and the local governments are on the same page. We don't want to go in different directions. And I think that's great. As a matter of fact, that we need to start having meetings of fact, that we, we need to start having meetings and start coordinating that, especially on broadband.
There's a real need to coordinate how this funding, all these different funding streams are coming together and, uh.
And I'm a firm believer, Matt, it'd be nice for us to lead that charge rather than be the tail.
Well, and I, and I think, and we've talked about this before, I think we need to get, get with the city and keep working that relationship so that we're all on the same page of what's happening.
Absolutely.
And to make sure we're not overlapping program funding already in play. You know, there's projects from highways that are already programmed, Region Nine, Mathemol, and X, you know, those folks, they know what those projects are. We don't want to reinvent the wheel with what we're already, um, doing. The other, the other factor I think is going to be a point of consideration for any of this federal funding, whatever, wherever it is in, in the pipeline, is inflation. Inflation is going to be a real, real concern, in my view. I'm not a financial expert, but I do a lot of reading, and it is a concern. And so, um, what money will we actually have at hand at the end of the day? And with the plethora of projects that are going to be enabled or empowered by this funding, what will the bid results be? How high will the bids come in because of the demand on construction and development, people building these projects? So these are all things to consider, I'm sure you guys are well aware, I don't need to say a lot about it. Um, but I do think that it would be good to have a, a regular group of people, uh, kind of looking at this, taking a look at this funding, makes the distinction how we're going to coordinate and strategize, who, who kept this funding source up here from the state level, would go up with that money to, to this project. Delegate Hardy was asking for these priorities, and I, I advised him that I would try to assemble priorities in different categories, you know, priorities for water, priorities for civil, priorities for water, priorities for parks and rec, priorities for highways.
Yeah, and, and I talked to, uh, Delegate Hardy about it and asked him if he's looking for priorities more so for state projects.
Right.
Versus local projects.
Right.
And, and he said, well, more than likely, state projects would be a priority.
Right. And, and how will broadband be, you know, because again, there's another, there's state program for broadband, there's, there's, there's.
Is that part of that $677 million? Is that the broadband expansion too, or is that a whole nother part?
That's a whole nother.
That's what I thought.
There's, like I said, the, the spreadsheet, I think we really need a spreadsheet, and I think we need a, a regular continuous look at what we're going to do with what and what we're going to pursue.
Mm-hmm.
What funding source we're going to pursue.
Well, we have that broadband study that should be done, or it's supposed to be being done.
Let's go.
Not, not the, not the fiber study, but the broadband.
Right.
That should be, um, that's going through Region Nine, I thought, but then you got the fiber, which is the RFQ.
Right.
So, but that hasn't, they haven't picked anybody for that yet, right?
No.
One of the things that I was thinking about in the debate about what the definition of infrastructure is, there's also been that debate, you know, what is defined as infrastructure? And, and who's defining it, and what law and what regulation and what program is going to define it, whatever way? And so that brought the thought of, is there a way, say, for example, parks and rec, trails do not meet the definition of infrastructure for some reason, which I respectfully disagree. I believe they are infrastructure. But could we, could we marry broadband, which I think has been accepted as infrastructure, with trails? Could we marry stormwater improvements with trails or parks?
Yeah, and, and there is, Matt Pennington is saying that there's, you know, stormwater, uh, storm parks would, would incorporate improving the quality of water.
Right. And in other words, could you do a broadband project and then, in the course of doing that broadband project, could you create basically the first step of, of a trail project?
Trail.
Come back later to, with different funding and a different project, complete a trail using the same right of way, you know, or a public utility amusement right of way. Um, so I was looking at those things because inflation factors and because of bid results, you know, your costs could be higher than expected with all these, with all this money in the market.
Oh, absolutely.
Do they have a point system figured out for, um, is there a point system figured out for awarding the money? I mean, that's a big question that I would have, is how do we, how do we meet those points that are going to get, um, the most, the most favorable attention?
Regarding the $677 million, uh, the legislature and the political lens and pleasure of the legislature is going to determine the allocation of those funds. Delegate Hardy expressed an interest in obviously getting our, becoming share and, and getting our fair share of that fund. As far as the point system, if the legislature, it obviously determines that there is some, uh, census-based or point-based system, uh, for allocating those funds, it's going to be, and they're, and they're arena to decide that. Uh, I would expect it probably hopefully would come up with a fair system, I mean, but, you know, that's, you know, who knows? But he expressed an interest for us to provide this information to him, uh, kind of in a way to kind of get us out in front and showing that, you know, we have our ducks somewhere on top of it as far as.
Plus, we're the fastest growing county in the state of West Virginia, we, we are the economic engine.
Right.
Um, and there's good and bad comes with that, Matt, because a lot of people at, at, in Charleston thinks that we have resources that no one else has. And, and in reality, we're the, we went from the 10th poorest per capita in the state of West Virginia to the 21st poorest.
And our distance from Charleston is also a factor.
Right, so, um, but, you know, as we spoke to the governor in the past, is, you know, just, just add a stick of wood to the fire once in a while instead of trying to put the fire out.
Just one final thought on the broadband was on, on the use of broadband to possibly get a recreation project. We've talked about a bridge going across a certain body of water. If we were to extend the fiber across the water under the bridge, perhaps.
Sure.
It gets built.
Sure.
With infrastructure.
Right.
Um, just a thought. Uh, but anyway, the, the other thing about, um, trying to incorporate, what you were talking about, the walking paths and trails, um, just a couple little notes on that. 20% of county's population have poor or fair health in Berkeley County, but adult obesity exceeding the state average and higher than the U.S. average by 13 points. Access to exercise opportunities is 44% to 15% lower than the state average. So we have an opportunity for trails and outdoor recreation opportunities to get our population healthier, and as a result of that, fewer.
Calls.
EMS, fire, which at the end of the day, states is wrong.
Mm-hmm.
So if we can incorporate trails and parks and rec into some of this infrastructure, they don't need the definition of infrastructure. We can overall, in the state, tax pay money with fewer, you know, alliances on our own system.
Mm-hmm.
So, just a few thoughts about that. So I just, I, I, again, I'm very, very, very much scrambling to put together priorities. Um, one other thing that did come to mind was, um, the passage of the booze bill of the legislature, and we've talked a lot about farmland protection and all that farmland we've preserved in the county. Could the county in a way pursue, um, an effort to bring out some, uh, some more agriculture there with park side or tree development, or expansion of organic fruit tree business, food product developments for large-scale commercial production? In other words, uh, those apple cider donuts that, that of course, could we send them to San Francisco and reproduce enough at a facility here? Would that meet the definition of infrastructure? You know, could we have a facility to send cheesecake to New York City, to, as far as it's, over the New York, um, for across the street? Um, you know, can we, can we maximize some of the, um, agriculture business here to, to produce more product here? And, uh, would an ag facility meet the definition of, of infrastructure? And that, or food security, of course. I think food security is a big issue, and, uh, I don't know whether it needs the definition of infrastructure or not, but I think there's an opportunity to grow and support some rural business here already in agriculture. And, uh, perhaps coal has some energy with the 6,000-plus acres of farm and protection into actual meaningful, uh, food production, crop production, whatever kind of agriculture production. Um, I don't know, as far as the role of the county council in that regard is, might, might, form that might take, but perhaps there could be a, you know, at least a meeting or something, an invitation to, uh, you know, kind of an informal discussion about opportunities to possibly collaborate or, or foster something in that, in that. Um, but that's where things are right at the moment.
All right, so you need to, basically, the whole reason for this is basically, you know, you got the water, you got the sewer, and actually coming from them.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I'm thinking the county, we, we, we have some, we want to expand our parks and trails and things of that nature, um, for quality of life because we're losing a lot of our young people and, and they, they live life differently than what we did, you know, or do, working all the time.
There's some great facilities here, there's great parks and rec facilities in the county. It's just making everything bigger and better.
Well.
That's, that's really.
Sure, sure.
And, and, you know, Matt brought this, we talked about this very, very quickly on Tuesday, and I, so I had the opportunity to talk about it, you know, certainly the expansion of our parks and rec, um, Poorhouse Farm.
Right.
Well, I was going to, yeah.
Would be a great project. We talked about a pedestrian bridge over the Potomac.
Right.
Um, if that's not infrastructure, I'm not sure what.
Right.
Would be that we connect Berkeley County in the area of Sportsman's Paradise and Seanoval Canal, and Seanoval Canal, um, is very much interested in park management. So those are two projects, and then, of course, we've been working on, but I don't want to already want Harold Drive for forever, I'm sure. If that's not on Sam, that would really surprise.
If you wanted me to, I can review some of the things that Sam.
Well, let's, let's work, let's work on Parks and Rec right now. So, so Sportsman, which would cover a, a pedestrian bridge or, and a bike bridge, right, would be one of them. Does that, everybody agree with that?
I, I think a project, and I agree, and I.
Talking about just for parks and rec.
Right, and I think a project that works, um, with the city, you know, we're, we're currently trying to get something going with Frog Hollow and getting over to Frog Hollow from Bike Path and get the, uh, the city's been talking for, since '09 about a path going out to, um, from downtown, going out, uh, maybe along the creek or something, getting out to the, uh, um, out to War Memorial Park, and then we've had a conversation about going from there and figuring a way to get to Poorhouse Farm to extend a bike trail. I mean, either, either that's, i- if it's not fitting in the definition of infrastructure, it should fit under the definition of the project you were, or the funding you were talking about, Capito, um, just voted to, uh, um, redo. So, uh, there should be some way to incorporate that, those things together, maybe.
With the city, uh, the theater.
Yeah, but Paula?
Yeah.
But if we're talking about Parks and Rec.
Oh, yeah.
This is kind of related to that, you know.
It was that the timing was a little bit different, so that we had that strategic plan, uh, that we've all invested in, had an opportunity for it to be in front of us so we could work off of that plan instead of working off of our own plan, not, not taking in consideration what the strategic plan may be.
And, and I, and I agree with you, but the unfortunate thing is, we don't have that opportunity, so you have to, so you have to come up with something, and maybe, you know, maybe there should be a quick discussion about that with the group, um, you know, if, if we're going to have a, uh, have a conversation, you know, if, just say, for example, we're talking about the bike trail moving all the way through, I mean, that's something that could, is already underway, already trying to figure it out, already working on it, um, that may be something, and, and the, you know, the, the bridge we're talking about connecting Sportsman's and, and all that, I mean, those are things that we're already working on, we're already moving towards, those are, um, those are not things that I think are going to be something new coming to the strategic plan. You know, those things are, are things that are in the works. Yeah, they're in the works, in the pipeline, they, absolutely, I would, I would think they're going to be part of that plan.
Well, right now, the president of the Parks and Rec did say that if we could find a way to do Sportsman's, expand on, um, uh, Poorhouse Farm, the park that's been talked about, the small park that's being talked about in the south and the north end, um, that's a huge, that's a huge, i- if that could get done, that's, that's, that's.
That's leaps and bounds.
That's.
It truly is.
Absolutely. And, and, um, to, to, you know, to take on any more than that would be, would be a huge.
But I, I understand what Eddie's saying, it's unfortunate, the timing of it all, but it's also to, I look at the cup is half full all the time, and this is a great opportunity for us to have this coming when we're already working towards these things right now, because one would think, one would think that if they're looking at approving projects, they're going to look at how shovel-ready these projects are, because if they're going to approve funding, they want to see results. I would, if I was the one going to award the money. So, you know, Alan, Alan mentioned Harold Drive, we've been working on that for, you know, four or five years, uh, the same, and, and one thing that I'm just thinking of that we didn't discuss, that we've been looking at and trying to figure out a solution for a very long time, is the stormwater issue in Berkeley Station, you know, and, and the, the traffic issues down on, um, like you were talking about on the north end of Route 11, you know, there's some areas on Route 11 that we could do some, um, some improvement to that we know needs to do, needs to happen, and that those are, those could be defined as state projects.
Or Route 9.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and that obviously would be a high priority, but also the flooding that occurs in Inwood East subdivision that's been there since, you know, the mid-'70s, basically.
I thought that was taken care of, that's not, they still have flooding in Inwood East, I don't know. I thought that was taken care of 20 years ago.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I think it's less than they had, the problems that they had.
Right.
A long time ago, but, um, but there's.
There was one that was done.
And, but.
Just recently.
But these things that, these things that we've been talking about, I mean, we've been, we've been on, we've had engineers involved, we've had state involved, there's an enormous amount of thought process that has went into the Berkeley Station, 711, you know, that, right in that area where the water, where the water runs over the road and all.
And there's, and there's more development plans for that area.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, you know.
But, but if you're looking at something that's close to shovel-ready, you know, I think that should be part of the con- consideration, you know, you're looking, and, and not to jump off Parks and Rec, because we were trying to stay there, but we've got the, the issue with the bridge that we've been having conversations in, and the development of a park down there and those type of things, you know, those are, those are close to shovel-ready projects, you know?
All right, let's get focused here, so Parks and Rec, um.
I have on my list, I have on my list, if I can just jump in, I have on my list Sportsman's Dash, public access site, so I have river, land acquisition there, trail connection, town river footbridge, I put that all under.
Right, on, under one, right?
Under, and then I have, um, I, I left Poorhouse Farm on, I left it off.
Well, Poorhouse Farm is really important because you have two brothers that's buying additional property that's, that's working with the county to expand Poorhouse Farm.
I lost track of it, I apologize, I, it was, it was in my mind, I don't know.
Right.
The other, the other matter, I kind of, I just put this down here just maybe for thought, I didn't know whether anyone was interested in land acquisition and sleeping brick or not, or improved access there, but it might be more of another pot of money from somewhere else, so.
I think with that being a wildlife area back there, um, I, I just, I, I would think that they want to keep it that way.
No, I mean, increase the acreage.
Increase the acreage.
Add more acreage, because we can wrap it up, I, I don't know, I mean, just if there was any interest in that community to increase it or not, or improve the access to the lake or access, I mean, I go up there, the parking along the road is limited on, where, you know, like where you can park to get to various places there, yeah, I don't know, that's just something I jotted in here for food for thought, maybe it's another pot of money, like I said, there's so many pots of money, unbelievably so, that strategizing where we're going to go for these funds is part of the game.
All right, so.
Um, and then, you know, I didn't, uh, then, I didn't say it, but the, the north end, south end idea that. the hundred fifty acre park on each end of the county, uh, that's still something I know, it's not in that, I know it's, well, that plan's not final, but I know that Steve had mentioned that as being a long goal for a while. It's a hundred fifty acre park on the north end, a hundred fifty acre park on the south end. I think he said a hundred acre plus, did he?
I think the, the part that, that, that we have on the north and the south end is the two small parks that's being worked on right now. Those are, those are, uh, good possibilities that's going to happen. Um, and just between those two parks, you'd probably be one point five million anyway.
Shovel-ready, I mean, they're, they're close to, you know, close to being able to have plans in place.
Right, the hundred and fifty acre parks on both ends, which I can see one day, we're nowhere close to that yet. Now, acquisition of, of the land could be a possibility.
I think that would be the avenue to approach initially, is to make the land acquisitions and say, okay, this is.
Well, let's do, let's do this, how about, um, how about naturally Sportsman's, because we've been working on that, Poorhouse Farm, uh, number three would be, why don't we just combine north and south end, uh.
Parkland acquisition.
Park development.
Park development, yes.
Park development.
Alright, um, and then I think the Frog Hollow along with the city of Martinsburg.
Yes, I have it on here.
Okay, and then the trail eventually going from, to extend that, because then it would go from Rancin' all the way to the Roundhouse.
What do they call that millennial trail that they were working on?
Millennial.
Huh?
Millennial Trail.
Millennial Trail.
The linear park?
Linear park, that's what it would be.
So, so then the next one would possibly be to, to, now this one's nuts. It would be pretty feasible to go from the Roundhouse to seven fifty Baltimore Street.
Yes, yes.
From Baltimore Street to Poorhouse Farm gets more difficult.
More difficult, right, but the, I think the connection to the Raleigh Street, uh, might have to be there.
You could probably do Frog Hollow in, and out to seven fifty Baltimore Street as one project.
Right.
What else we got? I mean, I'm just throwing stuff out there, just so we get something going.
And that's basically five on Parks and Rec, which is all three to five.
Anybody have anything else they want to add?
Feels a bigger priority, I mean, it's like anybody, any, anyone else with a feeling that they feel deserves to be in the top five, I mean, that's pretty much what he was asking for, was that the top five. I think we got five.
Everybody happy with that?
Honestly, I would like to, to rearrange your, your, your numbers there just a little bit.
Oh, you mean priorities?
Yes, sir.
Oh, and I don't agree, I agree those are the top five, I'm not saying I agree that those are the order way we.
No, well, we're going to do, we're going to say that these are five that we're going to look at, so.
But I, I just, I just like, because, you know, we do have some personal, uh, interests we don't, but outside of here, uh, in expanding that Poorhouse Farm part, I, I would like to get that a very high priority.
I'd like for that to be number one.
Yes, sir.
Because you have a huge amount of money being invested from private people.
Yes.
To make that happen.
And that's what I, that's it there.
Poorhouse Farm is number one.
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever happened to the idea about the city hospital and the board education and all that getting together for, uh.
It just got put off, this is not happening right now.
The, the problem I had with the Poorhouse Farm expansion being number one is that there's no vision on what that's going to entail, it's just buying a piece of property. And, and if you look at these other projects, and I'm going to use Poorhouse for, or, uh, Sportsman's for example, is that we already have a vision of what that's going to do, you know, as opposed to out there, which I think is a great idea, that one is more dependent upon the long-term goals of what the Parks and Rec wants to do with it, because we don't have a plan to, to create that land expansion into something. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think why it's a priority of mine is because you have outside private parties that have invested a huge amount of money to do the land acquisition, more so than the development. Actually, the easiest thing I think that's been talked about is expanding the trails out there for one.
Well, yeah, but we, we also have the park, I mean, if you're going to talk about the parks north and south, we have outside parties that are getting involved in, in donating a portion of, of time and effort or, or part of the ac- acquisitions.
And I was going to put those number two.
Yeah, you can't, you can't look at that as, uh.
Right.
As not being a part of it too, because if, I mean, if that's the determining factor.
My preference would be Poorhouse Farm, number two would be, um, Parks North and South, which isn't one, um.
Sportsman.
Sportsman's ready to go, that's for sure. Well, it's not a hundred percent ready to go, but it's getting close.
And Frog Hollow.
I know, I know, they're all, they're all important. I mean, you imagine, you imagine, you imagined going the trail from, from Rancin' to all the way out to seven fifty Baltimore Street, how that will help revive the Roundhouse? I mean, the Roundhouse could be a hub for, uh, bicycle shop, it could be a hub for, um, a, a restaurant, you know.
Not only that, but the downtown businesses, because you're bringing all that traffic right through downtown.
Absolutely.
An economic boost, an economic boost to downtown is also a money generator for the county, because they all pay, they all pay real estate taxes, property values go up.
And the distillery, all that out there. Alright, so.
Number one is Poorhouse, two is Park Development, which is the north and south, three is Frog Hollow, I guess. I don't.
I was going, I was, I was going to favor Sportsman though.
I would say Sports, I would say Sportsman's, because, uh, it's, it's, it's a much bigger, multifaceted.
It's a multi-state.
Huh?
It's a multi-state.
It's a multi-state, it's a state level, it's more state level oriented. I think that's the other thing, again, I want to back you off just a little bit. This is the, there's a state plot, the state plot of money, it's six hundred seventy-seven million, that's not your twenty-three million, that's not the surface transportation bill that's probably going to come through here with more money for bikes, bicycling, and.
Right.
So there's all these different pots of money, you know, and that's the challenge of like, okay, what do we want to tell Elegant Hartley? You know, what do we want to tell him that we want out of that state plot? You know, what do we want to tell him that we want out?
Well, since you're talking about transportation trails and all that stuff, then, then I would put Sportsman as number three.
Right.
And then do, do Frog Hollow and out to seven fifty Baltimore.
I, I don't know that I would even include Frog Hollow in this, this, I would probably, I would, I would use Frog Hollow, I would think, to go after the funding from Capito, the, the.
Right.
The capital, that money, the trails.
The surface transportation.
Yeah, I would, I would look at that, because that's, and, and, and I say that, that's my thought, but I still think that need, that conversation needs to happen with the city, you know.
Oh, I agree, I agree, but the problem is, you know, Matt can have that conversation real quick, but we don't have the option to do that. We can say, he can, he can ask the city of Martinsburg for if they would want to cooperate on asking for that money jointly, right?
Work together.
The state.
And we can give him the authority to have that conversation, because of the time constraints.
But I would, I would say, although I, I, I like that project, uh, I like that project a lot. Of course, I've been working on it for, uh, a year or so, um, but, uh, um, I think it sounds more like something that would go in that, that other funding.
The only thing I want to insert here about Frog Hollow and Sports, uh, versus Sportsman's in a way is, is that Frog Hollow and that project through the trails has tax-based implications, as you probably have already come to that realization. And it has immediate, almost immediate tax-based implications. I don't, I haven't checked the real estate crisis along that section, but I'm sure media coverage has certainly not hurt the, the sales of those properties along that corridor.
Correct.
So, the opportunity to get real revenue coming back to the county's, uh, offers is, is there. And, and I'm not saying this is not real money, but it's one-time money, and it's not going to be here, who knows what kind of, like, how much we're going to end up being able to really use, the value of those dollars. I don't know what's going to, where inflation's going to take us, but my point is, is that, that, I don't want to say we should be thinking about money, but who knows where the economy's going to go here.
No, it's more, it's more than just creating a trail, it's creating additional.
Economic development. And that's why I was trying to suggest maybe marrying some of this broad end, or maybe some of these projects with the recreation. That way we definitely get two bites together, um, you know, trying to put trails to the broad end. Or, or stormwater with trails, or parks.
So you're already trying to figure out what points they're going to give for awarding the money, is what you're saying.
Right, to marry the two together, so you can, so you can not only get a quality lake boost, but a tax-based improvement as well, reclaiming that the stormwater projects on the north end, I'm not going off track now, but if we can reclaim some tax base in the stormwater impacted areas, north of Martinsburg, reclaim that tax base, and put a park improvement there along the way, in the same movement, then we really are cashing for the long term.
I, I have one question, is Elegant Hartley wanting a list specific for Big American Rescue Plan? Because.
I don't have a name for it, but it's the six hundred seventy-seven million dollar state legislature. It's down to the state legislature passed a bill that basically says.
Big American Rescue Plan. Well, because, I mean, there's a lot of sources of funding, like, we're talking about funding for, uh, buying a big chunk of land for a park, I don't think that is in there, it might be, there used to be, uh, Big American Outdoors app, puts a lot of money into conservation, like the cat splash, you know, but that might be something we try to go out there. But this, I think, is more toward water, sewer, ground stuff, whereas in the next bill will be the, uh, the surface transportation infrastructure, but I mean, I, I like having the lists, like, in separate categories, but just giving them all to the down.
Right, right.
Just if you think it applies.
Right, that's what I, that's why I was recommending the categories, because I wasn't clear on, on what the eligibility was. Exactly, very good, excellent point, because that's exactly what I was thinking, I was like, oh, what is the definition of infrastructure? You know, and, and so, yeah, that's why I was recommending to give the legislature, here's our categories of priorities, you know, one, two, three, four.
No, and that's, and that's why I mentioned the, the area up at Berkeley Station area, because that, I think that definitely falls under infrastructure. You know, if you're, if you're looking at the water, I think the, the Harold Drive definitely falls under infrastructure, and I don't think there's going to be a debate on whether or not the, the, you know, as for the trails or the parks or those type of things, I think there is a debate that's going to happen whether or not that's actually qualifying. If you, if you look at the, the, uh, the clear picture of that, um, roads, sewer water, stormwater, you know, those that, um, and fiber is the new kid in the, kid on the block, um, you know, those are the, those are definitely, uh, things that fall under infrastructure, and if we're going to go after something, I think those are the targets we should be hitting, because they're the most, most likely to hit.
Parks and Rec will be a slim chance of getting any funding for, but we wanted to throw that in there. So we have the three top priorities, well, Parks and Rec.
Yeah, you have three.
And we have, you want to just add the other two in there, just?
Poorhouse, Park Development, and Sportsman's.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to have, have and give it to them, but I, I, I truly believe that those are going to be, um, those type of projects are probably going to be eliminated off.
I agree, I agree, so, and Frog Hollow, and what was the fifth one? Or do we combine two of them together? We combine them? Okay, alright, so now, I guess we'll move on to, to road infrastructure, because that's going to be a big one for them.
Uh, Harold Drive, uh, was, I think, the top of Sandy's list.
Alright, so.
She explains it all here.
If we're going to talk about Harold Drive, until you get done that conversation, I'm going to recuse myself on it, because I have profit.
Well, let's bump that to the bottom, I'm going to.
Okay.
We'll skip over that right now. Hedgesville bypass improvement, she also mentioned that as well, I.
That's big, I mean, traffic is backing up from Hedgesville Square to Tractor Supply almost every night.
Huge.
Problem with that, and, and I agree, that it's going to be a big priority in our county, but the problem with that is it's so far from, uh, it's so far from.
Being shovel-ready.
Being shovel-ready, I mean, there's.
Ten years.
Yeah, and the conversations that we've had on, with the MPO is that it's, it's, it's a project that's on nobody's radar at a state level. So, there's no funding in the next ten years, what they're saying for that project. So, even though there's funding here now, how are we going to get them to mentally switch gears and say, yeah, this needs to be done, you know?
We have the chairman of the infrastructure.
I understand, I understand.
That's his job, to, to make them aware of the condition here, and it's, it's real.
Yeah, I.
Well, I, I don't know how many times over the last twenty years you've tried to get through Berkeley Springs, but that has been a nightmare for a long time, going through Berkeley Springs on five twenty-two. And they, they just last year, last year they got the word of the grant to start the bypass around.
But not finish the bypass.
Not finish.
Alright, so what was Sandy's?
Sandy, basically, you know, she talked about expanding her alternative highways for about nine, economic development and safety reasons for that, um.
Right.
Across ten to twelve million, that was her, I think that was her, in her top five. She just provided top, she just provided top five, top priorities from her perspective.
What were all five?
Um, they're going to make me go through all these different categories. Um, broadband was in there, um, uh, Hedgesville bypass improvements, Harold Drive, and then her underwater and sewer, her utilities, public utilities. She talked about, um, public utilities on the west side of eighty-one at exit eight, uh, for bringing water, sewer, natural gas to the west side of eighty-one at exit eight, and exit eight is the.
Camera station.
Which is where all the cluster, and I think that makes economic sense, that what it, you know, that.
You know, the water, that's already in the plans, the water district.
Okay.
And the broad plans, not specific.
In the longer range.
Yeah, including, uh, developing water supply over there and upgrading the Bunker Hill plant.
Okay.
And that directly ties in Harold Drive, too.
And that ties in Harold Drive, okay, well. And then her other recommendation there was, uh, public utilities on the west side of eighty-one, exit five, and that's the inlet, Jaredstown, uh, infrastructure there, she said, uh, water, sewer, natural gas, commercial industrial development, and benefiting existing, uh, residential development there. I think those were, were fine, I believe, unless I'm leaving something out here, I didn't, I think that was it.
So, so I, I guess my question is, do, do we know of any, um, anything? And, and Doug spoke today about eighty-one, which is, the ramps is a really good idea, but do we know anything that, um, in Berkeley County is, um.
Shovel-ready?
Is more shovel-ready than, than would be the, the Harold Drive project, the, um.
Dysfunction Junction.
The, the, the exit twelve area, um, all the issues in that area, and, uh, well, what was it? What was it there? Oh, the, the Berkeley Station, stormwater area, um, because that's a, that's a road issue there. It's got to be a road issue stormwater, unless you're creating another one for stormwater utility. Are we going to?
I had a stormwater category.
Okay, alright, so then.
Category, because the Roundhouse has a stormwater issue.
Is that, would that be a road issue or a stormwater issue?
What?
The, the whole round eleven area, north.
I think it's stormwater.
It's stormwater there.
If you corrected that issue, you wouldn't have a highway issue.
And that, and that's really, a lot of that's coming from eighty-one, if not all of it. It's coming under eighty-one, right there across from the Mount near pub.
There's a lot that comes down off of Eagle School, in behind, or if it plows, or way down through that farm, in the behind.
But I've seen, I've seen it come by where you're talking about, by, by the mountain there, I've seen it a hundred feet wide going down through there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one, that's one of the things that I, you touched on something I've noted here, I, I want, I want port over stormwater and the development of I eighty-one, as you've said, and we've all said, I think, various stuff was never. As you've said, and we've all said, I think, very tough, was never, stormwater was never addressed. So, and.
Zero.
Putting this to the state, as a state project, I think, I think we would get support, especially if we emphasize that I eighty-one relationship to this US eleven problem. You know, to address all of this stormwater, un, unaddressed stormwater issues related to I eighty-one, including this US eleven.
All right, so, and I gotta, we gotta close, I gotta, so, and this is a good time for me to just jump out of here. I'll recuse myself, the statement of recusing because I've heard it several times, it's Herald Drive, I don't want to be part of that conversation. And, and, but everything else, what we've talked about, I know the further develop, the north end of the town or north end of county. I've been expressed that a concern is the road improvement forum from Sheetz. On past the old DuPont property, probably all the way down to the water plant is a, is a real concern.
Enormous amount of growth right there.
Right, and, and in the water, I think, you know, that, that could be included in the, MS four wouldn't necessarily have to be a separate category, but that could be on that road infrastructure. And I told Dan or Eddie this morning that one of the, Charleston has bridges that go everywhere for, to relieve, to alleviate, alleviate congestion. I think it's time that X and twelve is going to have to have bridges over top of bridges to get the traffic to be not congested.
One of the things I suggested that we, that may be pitched to the state as well, this was another thought, I don't know how behind this guy it is, but elimination of that great crossing. At Parkers Drive and elimination and elevate the railroad over, over, you know, over that, over that road.
Well, the, the Department of Transportation has a really good plan. I mean, we met a few years ago about, about the, the exit, the exit onto, onto eighty-one north, which is a big problem. If you put, if you put two lanes coming all the way down going on to that and, and then make the, extend the ramp out and narrow it down to one lane going into the, into the interstate. And that's part of their plan.
There's also, there's also a connector that they were looking at, W three five Scott Avenue and Manchester Avenue, keep internal city traffic off of Manchester Avenue, off of that road's drive. In other words, creating a second connection into Fox Street Avenue.
All right, I'll recuse myself, so.
Another part of that conversation that we had was the possible extension of Novak Drive going to the new route nine.
The new route.
To alleviate some of the traffic on that exit twelve.
Well, yeah, that's been considered for several years.
Right, that was a big, I, I forget about that, a big project that was talked about as well. As well as, I mean, there's been conversations about putting an exit ten in. You know?
Even, even bridges across the highway that don't necessarily create new exits. I mean, maybe east west, you know, extend traffic across the highway and then even back down that side into connect to eighty-one from that side. I don't think that would make it easier or worse or what. There's lots of different highway projects that. Herald Drive though was, was on the list of Sandy's list as a, as a top five priority for her. She noted that the infrastructure needed for economic development as well as safety at exit twelve. I think this ties into the exit twelve discussion really more than anything else. But this project apparently is already underway, she's somewhat matching the federal PBA grant for the study of this area. This, this government authority is matching that already, so.
For that Herald Drive? For Herald Drive?
Yeah, for Herald.
Well, actually Herald Drive, I mean, it's not just the study, they're doing a design on it.
Okay.
Yeah, they're doing a design on the, yeah, on the road.
That was part of that grant, why not, could be a.
Right, yeah, they're doing a design on it to, and not a full-fledged design, but a basic, basic design of how that could, how that could come about. So that, you know, could apply for grants for a building grade.
And that would go down to exit eight.
It'd go to exit eight, that's correct.
Yeah, so that's on her list of five priorities that she had. She apologized for not really expounding on all of them as much as she did. But basically that's what she was saying about the economic development, safety issues there at exit twelve. I mean, there's a lot of related issues at exit twelve beyond just that project that I, I'm sure, well, I'm not sure because I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seemed to be an improvement there.
Well, the state has a good plan.
Right.
And, and maybe that should be part of the priority for the state to come up with, for the state to use some of this funding for that plan that they have to get that project going, you know?
Where do you think it fits in the priority, like highway projects?
Well.
Is it, I mean, is it number one, number two?
I can tell you that my thought is I eighty-one is probably the busiest state in the, road in the state of West Virginia. That exit twelve may very well be the busiest exit on the busiest road in the state of West Virginia. And so I think there could be a very good argument that infrastructure improvements would be best suited in that area as a state project.
Maybe it should be.
Does that make sense?
Maybe the description of the, that project could be kind of widened then maybe is what you're hearing.
Right.
A more bigger back row view of that.
That the Herald Drive.
Widening of Apple Harvest Drive, maybe an upgrade crossing, I don't know what.
And, and maybe, and, and maybe that's a conversation that you could have with the city as well because maybe in that whole conversation, that road runs from exit twelve. We tie Herald Drive in and then there's Herald Drive, or from exit twelve to exit thirteen, there's another access road on the, on the west side that ties those two. I mean, you know, if you're, I mean, that's kind of a big scale project, but.
It is.
The Department of Transportation have been saying that they are going to start that project, so I would think.
Included in the Delmore route?
Yeah. I would think they've already got funding.
Well, that's what I was going to say, that part of this is, I don't want to put a request in, it's already programmed, you know.
Right, but I mean, if you, if you tie it together, it's to add to what they've already got funding to do. So it's not, it's not creating a whole new project, it's, it's, it's making the project that's there even larger.
An improvement of Route forty-five west from exit twelve to R because you travel. You better know the route.
Oh, yeah. Well, I took it with my car there. I mean, five years.
But, but to your point, just a bit ago, Dan, eighty-one is the busiest truck route east of the Mississippi. And Route nine eleven forty-five is the busiest intersection in the state of West Virginia, so it obviously needs some help.
If we're going to go after funding for road, the help, it just makes sense to me to, to give that to them as a top priority. Because although there's many other things I'd like to see happen, I would think if I was them and I was going to spend money and somebody came to me and said, listen, we want to do something on the busiest road and the busiest intersection. This is what we'd like to see you do, how could you say no to something like that?
So basically what I'm hearing then is that the top project would be exit twelve, Herald Drive. All together.
Right.
Is number two, the Hedgesville bypass then?
It's gotta be, it's gotta be like one point.
One point five.
I think, and, and the unfortunate thing is I think that's more of a, a pie in the sky thing because of the amount of work that has to be done in order to get it to that threshold.
Well, I would.
I, I think it's a.
Yeah, they haven't selected route yet, you know.
Right, I would suggest that this is an opportunity to, to get a jumpstart a little bit.
And maybe that's, and maybe that's the thought process, maybe the thought process is to do the design for it, you know, funding to get the design for it.
To jumpstart it, it might not be another, might be another.
Yes.
But.
Yeah, maybe.
Environmental studies, land acquisition.
Oh, yeah.
Land acquisition.
It's going to be another corridor age.
Right, but, but, but a good, but a good thought process is, is if it's not, if it's not, if, and, and I agree, it should be real high on the priority. But if it's not the, if it's not a funding project to build, let's get the funding to design it.
Let's get it in the program.
And get that part of it going forward instead of waiting, how long then? Ten more years?
At least.
That's what they said, at least ten years.
They don't have a route yet, so.
At least ten years before it gets looked at again.
I, I didn't have a third, I didn't have a third priority and I.
Let's do Novak.
Novak?
Extension of Novak.
Novak?
Yeah.
That was the, from Novak to.
The short road.
Short road.
Yeah, that's, that's a, I, I don't think they never, I don't think they, didn't they have three paths out there?
Yeah.
I don't think they ever defined what path, but.
I think the one to short road was the one of choice. Because one went from Novak and came out almost there, aims forward.
But Novak to short road is, you know, that's.
That's more.
Yeah, that's not the middle of nowhere, but as much of nowhere as you're going to get.
But that would have to alleviate somewhat of the traffic.
Well, yeah, if you're heading south, it gives you.
Absolutely, if I was going, if I was going to Charlestown or that area, why would you not, and you come from the South eighty-one, why would you not take Novak and avoid all the nine eleven intersection?
Okay, that's three, I don't know if we're going to identify anymore, if we can, two more if you want. I don't think they have suggestions, I, I, I mean, some of these projects like.
I personally would love to see a turning lane in the middle of Route eleven, like they got in Virginia, all from Virginia line to Tobe River. Yeah, widen Route eleven, they got a sixty-foot right of way now, use it.
Except for, for dark traffic.
Well, you may, you can imagine what a good bulldozer would do.
I mean, if you want, if you want, we can put that.
You tell them, not me.
We could put a, we could put it on the list.
He's, he, he didn't, he didn't live in South Berkeley.
Yeah, I've not, never lived in South Berkeley.
Spent a lot of time there, but you never lived there.
I, I don't know whether, you know, it's, it's alternative transportation, but it comes back to whether we want the trails or anything in this category, I don't, I don't know whether, but. Yeah, some of these people are now, you know, as, as you heard from Capino's passage of that service transportation, they're now considering. Bicycle paths transportation, so.
Right, but I, I don't, I don't.
I can see a nice bicycle path all the way along Winchester Western.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that, in, in, in my opinion, I think that, I think we're wasting our time putting bicycle paths in, in the infrastructure. If, if I was the one deciding, I wouldn't approve bicycle paths in infrastructure, although I, I, they're high on my list of things I'd like to see done.
Right, just to fit into that.
Right.
That necessity.
Yeah. You want to put a US eleven widening?
They can already start it again.
Improvement of US eleven.
From corporate world.
South.
They're doing some engineering work on it now. So I guess that report that came out last week with the Public County School System, they're predicting in about eight years, there'll be an official twenty-three, twenty-four thousand people here. So we have the opportunity now to try and get some of our highway issues taken care of, we better be doing that because there's more people coming.
Well, and there's no doubt, I mean, with the building that we're having right now, we have national builders now that are coming back into our area. In oh-five, we had a lot of national builders in our area, they went away, they haven't been back, well, they're back now.
Oh, brother? Who are you talking about? Oh, brother?
We, we have interest from.
Stan Martin.
I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of national builders we have right now that are looking in this area, making offers on properties, they may not be buying, but they're offering.
I just have a point that, are we, we're done with the discussion of Harold Drive?
I think so.
He's in, he's already closing now.
Okay, they're, they're, they have, yeah, they have.
Okay, I didn't know whether to invite him back in or not.
They're not coming back.
Okay. Do you want to just leave it at three now, or do you want to add US eleven widening improvements to US eleven, widening to the list?
I, I don't. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, yay.
I would say yay.
Okay. You want to add?
Not getting any better.
You want to add a fifth one or just leave it at four? Because I don't think it really, I mean, the party wasn't saying, you know, you have to add five.
Well, I would say the US, yeah, you said US Route eleven period, right?
Right.
Because there's issues north and there's issues south.
Improvements to US eleven and widening to US eleven.
I, I think that's, that's.
If you do have Route forty-five west on there to R.
That would be five. Thank you. Okay. Under broadband, which I added as, as its own category, Sandy, I wanted to touch on what Sandy said about that. She said, she says it's necessary, enhance and diversify economic development as well as educational opportunities. Her estimate was fifteen eighteen million, I think it's more like twenty-five million or so, but anyway. I think it's obviously a very high priority overall.
And it's a high priority with the state right now. I mean, that's been a conversation in legislature, a big conversation this year.
And I'm not sure how the funds that are committed already to the state and the federal government, there's a lot of money, I think.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
For that. So I, I didn't know, you know, what we wanted to, but I guess we should just go ahead and put it on the list, right? But the other thing I was going to suggest in, in this category was possibly a, a, a development, a deployment of a fiber business corporate community in eastern West Virginia, regional area. It's a little bit of a pie in the sky idea, but, you know, in addition to putting the backbone of the fiber through that more south through the county, which is what I think everybody here is wanting to do. To have a STEM come off to the airport and create a corporate business fiber community there where you could have, you know, IT tech business.
Data center.
Data, right, technology of all kinds connected, obviously with the airport and center. So I was going to add that as a separate.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, I mean, there's a movement in that area already to do just that, so.
I didn't know that, but I just thought, that thought came to me, I thought there's also a residential idea of doing a similar kind of thing on a residential, perspective of doing a residential fiber community, but which has been done in Virginia. And again, I just want to touch on that, I, I thought, you know, the idea if you could create, if you could put the backbone in for the, the fiber, you know, you put the north-south in. And you could possibly establish a peaceman or right-of-way for a trail later on, but a separate bottom line or a separate grant condition. I just thought that would be a way to possibly get something.
Yeah, I think that, that, the, the trail that's going to pull the north-south is probably going to be the rail, rail run along.
If they get, if they do the Novak Drive thing, it's going to have probably a trail with it because that's what they do nowadays. Which would tie into, to the Route nine trail.
Might could tie into the.
You cross here, second lane.
That's a good point, if they do, if they do the Hedgesville, the Route nine going that way, they could tie that right through Martinsburg and tie it into, now we're creating a whole spider web of bicycle trails.
On the way to Berkeley Spring.
So I only had, I only had two, I only had two projects listed under broadband, which was the deployment of the fiber backbone and then that, that commercial.
Center.
Center fiber community out here. I don't have an estimate on what that would cost, but underwater, I guess I kind of reiterated Sandy's, and I think we kind of covered that a little bit. I didn't know if we needed to include though, anything to do with the Tobe River Water Plant.
Well, there's no consideration now for the Potomac River Plant because they're doing everything for Bunker Hill currently. And, you know, but, you know, because they're looking for another water source. They're not, they're not in absolute need of water for the north end of the county as much as they are for the south end.
No, but I think there's, there is water issues around the exit eight, I mean.
Exit eight?
Yeah, the. Yeah, the, an off insulation has, they actually draw down, and Eddie can probably verify this, don't they draw down their emergency?
That's what I've been told.
Yeah.
That's not a good practice.
Yeah, they draw. Anything on exit eight has a problem because exit eight is the underserved area of the Berkeley County Public Service Water District. There's no water traveling into that area, that's what.
That's the point.
That's what Grapevine Road is for and all that kind of stuff.
What he said, we need to get water traveling into that area more.
And that's, that was part of their ten million dollar.
Pick it up from Fever Spring.
Well, actually, a lot of that comes from the city of Martinsburg.
Or Big Springs.
Do we have any kind of estimate on how we, or any kind of?
No, but the water department, I'm sure does because they've had that.
The total estimated cost of all the improvements is something like fifty, sixty million dollars.
Oh, okay, good.
But that's, you know, that's Bunker Hill.
Right.
But they've had, they've had a conversation about this exit eight area because they've had a.
Well, because they can't get water to exit eight because the water supplies are here and here and exit eight's here.
Well, they have, and they don't have the pressure there, so there has to be some type of tower or something.
Well, that's why they built a tank at Grove's Corner, and that's why they're looking for a tank site on the other side of eighty-one. Because pressure, volume, and, and they got pressure stations at, of course, Carpet World and fifty-one, you know, and they own Grapevine Road because they gotta get water.
Should we, should we wait to hit then the tier?
Well, you could, you could talk to Jim, we met.
Please agree what they, you go with their recommendation.
Yeah, Jim's got a, Jim, Jim's working on a plan for that area.
Okay. Okay. Uh, stormwater management, we already kind of talked about, but the number one, two, three there is, 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 is what? I eighty-one, US eleven? Or stormwater?
I eighty-one runoff is, is obviously an issue.
All along, touches there.
It's an issue all along, but I think, I mean, if I was gonna, is, is the, is the Darkville area the biggest priority? Or not Darkville, but the, of the betting.
Berkeley Station.
Berkeley Station, is Berkeley Station the biggest priority?
Biggest problem, training, flooding. For flooding, once a couple of years ago.
For water.
So that would be.
I mean, Route eleven was closed for nearly a week.
Right.
I mean, obviously, I mean, that was going a hundred-year flood, but.
That was every week then?
Yeah, it was, it was several weeks.
But I mean, that, that area, I mean, I've been here since nineteen eighty and I can remember it flooding forever in that area. Drive through water.
Well, flood back in six months.
Now, there's no doubt.
Well, I'll wait to hear from them and see what they have. But I said in my, you know, probably the field at US eleven, that is, Baker, Berkeley Station.
Berkeley Station.
Could be number one, and maybe I eighty-one corridor.
Well, they, they add two more lanes and they don't do anything for stormwater, you know?
Right.
You figure it out.
I think we've covered everything else except for maybe some other categories or other things that may. I mean, I mentioned agriculture and tourism, but again, eligibility to that funding law, so. I'll rehash all this and what I could do is, once I get all the information together, I can send it out to all, you know, if you'd like, review it, make sure it's good.
It'd be very nice.
We mumbled through this, I apologize.
Okay.
One thing, the engineer's investment plan is money for the cost of building, building stuff for, for the type of infrastructure that, so if like the health department, they needed expanding that building, that, that, something, money to be.
The health department?
Yeah, that expansion and also a permanent generator at that particular site is desperately needed. And, you know, lessons learned, you know, it, it may not happen again for another two hundred years, but if you have the opportunity to prepare yourself now, it's the time, it's like, perhaps they, they may even need some cold storage there to be able to take care of their vaccines that they use on a daily basis anyway. I, I don't know, it's up to Bill and his crew to decide what.
Expansion to the health department, perhaps, and permanent generator and perhaps cold storage. I can reach out and get him, get a.
Priority list from him.
Get a priority list from him, he may ask for a spec.
Jim, I don't know, I have to exit.
Or is that a state responsibility?
Well, that's just it.
Yeah, I don't know.
And there's other pots of funds, again, multiple pots of funds.
We're gonna have a forum here soon.
Right. I think we're good. If you have anything else, I'll, I'll put this.
We know where to find you.
Yes, know where to find you.
Before you leave.
Yes.
And I would ask Mr. Davis, if he was here, with, with these various funds coming, obviously, and all of the projects that are going on that are, that, that we've recommended, not, let alone what the state and the city may have, do you feel as if we need a person at the top of that to manage those?
Priorities?
Priorities, projects, dollars?
It, it is a, it is a whole other level, I mean, what makes this really challenging, I'll say it that way. We just went through an earmark application process for funds at the last minute, just, just a week or so ago, is that all of this cash is, all these funds are just coming all along. So it really is kind of a, I, I think a spreadsheet, I, I think a standing working group of people meeting regularly would be good to, at the very least, to try to determine whether, because first of all, you gotta get, you gotta identify, so you gotta see what we're gonna get for one. That's a, that's a really excellent question, but I, I think, I think it would require some more discussion among different people, engineering, planning, what their, you know, what their take on it is as well. I think there's a lot of financial, tracking the funds and, and, you know, the auditor, the C auditor McCuskey, you know, he was encouraging the communities to use the checkbook program. And we do that, and so I don't know if that would be a tool that would basically help us manage this in a sense, but as far as the strategies on how to, how to carry out each one of these.
Projects.
Who would oversee them and, you know, I, I kind of see a lot of this, this, you know, agency involved where, you know, there's state projects like the highway stuff, you know, it's more or less almost like a partnership where, you know, you have Harold Drive, for example, that's gonna be a state project, I mean, the state can take the lead on that. We're just basically committing a chunk of our funds toward that. This versus a local project, you know, I, I don't see too many of these projects not being carried out or executed by us. Really, at least not this pot of funds, really, I mean, maybe the stormwater, but again, that's a state road. US eleven, I mean, that's, it's a state road, so.
It's a US highway.
US highway.
Right.
And they, they, you know, so I would think that they would carry out, they would take the lead with that project. Now, how many staff do they have to carry out, execute this project? How long is this gonna take to get done? You know, the bid process that they have, they, you know, are, you know, are, are they gonna allow the local jurisdictions to take the lead and carry it out and execute this project somewhere? I think there's a lot of unanswered questions on how the execution of these projects is gonna.
Commence.
Yeah, gonna be done, so. There's a lot of unanswered questions and I, and. I think it's good of Delegate Harding to ask us to go do this exercise, I think we have some time. He expressed urgency, but, and I, I, I think we should be on top of it, we should take the lead, we should show that we're leading, and I think we have a lot of other ways as a county, but I think we do have some time to work through this. Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Now we have items from the public. Would anybody like to speak, Kenioti? We got a couple of visitors. Zee, did you wanna come?
Come on up.
Come on up. Well, just what you told me when, when I got you an application that you were willing to serve on the criminal justice board, you were running an application, so that's just letting us know, but, but we kind of took care of it before this point, but we just wanted to give her the time to speak and tell us a little bit about what you're thinking.
Well, I'm really interested because I have a whole bunch of kids and I've worked for a national advocate program, which worked at D H R, and I was a safe at home facilitator, and so I worked a lot with the court system and activists' families and activists' kids. And now that I'm retired, I would like to continue, and I see that this community has a serious need. And we have a need for parenting classes because there's a lot of, sorry, but this last generation doesn't know how to parent. They're so busy out there on the streets that I think that instead of snatching kids away in foster care, that maybe we can work a little closer with that part of it and try to stop it before it gets to the day program. And then from there, once you hit the back step, work with that part, and I wanna help out with that. Like I said, I have fourteen kids, I've got, I have eight of my own and I have adopted six. And then I've got five more.
That's a lot, that's a lot of kids.
Yeah.
You have baseball games on each side?
Oh, we have football, we, we're a football kind of family, make it fight, but, so I wanna, I wanna bring everything in as soon because what I've noticed working with Safe at Home was that when I was trying to get help for my families, everything is segregated, everything's in little boxes, and this organization really doesn't know what this organization's doing, and there's a lot of overlap, and then over that overlap, there's a lot of gaps. Whereas somebody else, this organization thought that that organization was gonna take care of it, and so I just wanna be that. I would think we should have one centralized hole that everybody can go to, so, okay, this family member needs this. And if we could just put a database together, or we used to use this little pamphlet, and we used to just update it every couple of years. Well, that little pamphlet is literally a piece of paper, and people lose it and it's never updated enough, and so I just wanna help. Instead of complaining about stuff all the time, I wanna help. Like, I used to live over on King Street with, at that time I only had like thirteen kids, and it was, it was bad. We moved there, it was a half-decent neighborhood, and then we watched it just go to puts. And so I packed up my whole family and moved all the way to Berkeley Springs. For three years, we lived out there on our little six-acre property, and it was great. And I'll pack up all of my kids, I brought them with their kids, because that neighborhood got so bad that, I mean, the police didn't know who the police, and so they were just snatching up everybody, and because of who we were, we got targeted a lot. So we moved to Berkeley Springs, where we got burned out in Berkeley Springs, and so we're back. And I don't wanna write anymore, I wanna help change things. So, yeah, I wanna be a part of everything, as crazy as that sounds. I, I want to pull my kids in because they're the next generation. I'm on the diversity council, I'm on N W A C P, I'm in the past program, I'm on the epic community at Head Start. I wanna just, I, I used to volunteer at the senior center when my father was alive. I wanna take it from the babies and bring it all the way up to the older people, I want everybody to be able to work together, and I don't think it's a dream. I think it can happen, so that's who I am, that's what I want. And anybody seen my partner around, we've been there thirty-two years since July first, and he's just burned out too, and we're all just, I wanna bring everybody in. I got all these young kids, let's put on us, let's get them busy, let's put them to work before they decide to just sit out in the streets and play video games on there.
One more question for our records, would you mind giving us your name?
I didn't mention that part?
I didn't hear you, you did.
My name is Zondria Lansdowne, and everybody just call me Zee.
Can you spell it for me?
Zee like in Zebra, O-N-D-R-I-A, and my last name is Lansdowne, it's L-A-N-S, D like in Little, O-W-N-E. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zee, great to meet you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mark, you wanna tell us anything that new? Have you heard enough today? Okay, Zee won't say a word now, I'm gonna put him in the spotlight, I think I'll take the camera and spin it around and put it on him. Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President Pro Tem, Mr. Vice President, I'm reading your say.
We are recital, thank you.